So uh I am going to begin this evening's meeting because we have had a um reorganization. And we are going to discuss that shortly, but before I begin. This meeting is a meeting of the Easton School Committee. It's taking place over Zoom in accordance with Governor Charlie Baker's emergency order during the pandemic. The meeting is being recorded by ECAT and simultaneously broadcast on Facebook Live. It can also be viewed on ECAT later this week. If you have a question during this meeting, please type it in the Q and A, but be sure to write your name. And address with your question, it will not be able to be read aloud otherwise. Um and that will take place during the pu- public participation. Portion of the meeting. So I am now calling the meeting to order. We will have a reorganization of the school committee. Elections were held on April twenty fourth and the committee will now vote on a chair and a vice chair. So um item three is voting to appoint a chair and vice chair. Um I do not know if there is a nomination of someone for chair. Nancy?
I would like to nominate Michelle Durant as chair. She is very organized and in tune with school and town activities. Michelle is great at social media and she is in the beginning of her fifth year on the school committee. I believe Michelle is the right choice for school committee chair and I nominate her.
Wiseman second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the topic? Okay, roll call vote please.
O'Neil, an enthusiastic yes.
Do I vote?
Wiseman yes.
Star yes.
Okay, so by unanimous um affirmative, Michelle Durant is the new school committee chair. Uh congratulations, Chair.
Thank you, thank you.
And now Chair, you can do the vote for Vice Chair.
All right.
And the meeting over to you.
Thank you. Um so I would be looking for a nomination for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Jen Starr. Uh it was very nice Nancy that you. Did a little spiel about Michelle and I wasn't prepared for that, but I must say that if anyone is incredibly. Just smart and organized and. Involved with everything and does her homework every single time and on time. That's Jen Starr, so I'm happy to nominate her for Vice Chair.
Second.
Okay, so. We've moved to a vote, is that correct? Roll call vote?
As long as there's no further discussion on the topic.
Any further discussion? Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. We'll keep the same order because I'm not prepared for a different order.
Okay, O'Neil, yes. I'm not prepared either.
Um Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Great, great.
Congratulations, Vice Chair.
Thank you, everybody. And thank you Caroline for your kind words.
Yes, and thank you uh Nancy. And I just wanna say thank you to Nancy. And Jackie for um navigating a crazy couple, three or four years. It's been a wild ride and you guys have been wonderful leaders and so thank you. And I'll have a lot of questions. Alright, so we are moving on to the minutes, the first minutes of the regular meeting of March twenty fifth. Are there any questions, comments, edits? No? Alright, can I have a motion to accept them?
I move to accept those minutes.
Second.
Okay, and a roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Excellent. Alright, the next minutes are from the regular meeting of April eighth. Are there any questions, comments, edits? Lynn is on top of things these days. Thank you. Alright, um.
I make a motion to accept the April eighth minutes.
Thank you.
Wiseman, second.
Okay, can I take a roll call vote?
You, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Alright, the next minutes are from executive session. Um so I don't know if there's any questions, comments, edits. If not, um I make a motion to approve but not release.
Which date?
Um this is October twenty second.
The one that's in the forty-two font.
I kinda like the large font. This is easy to read.
I haven't, it took me, I haven't gotten it right in two years, so. Second.
Nice, Leeta.
Alright, a roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Alright, the next are from the executive session of March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Question, comments, edits? If not, I make a motion to accept and not release the executive minutes from March twenty fifth.
Second. O'Neil?
Alright, a roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Alright, and the last ones are from the executive session on April eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Question, comments, edits? If not, I make a motion to accept and not release the executive minutes from April eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Have a second?
Wiseman, second.
Alright, roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Excellent, thank you. Alright, um next item is public hearing, school choice. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So this is the beginning of our posted public hearing for school choice. Uh once per year at this time, school districts that do not have. School choice previously will need to consider and vote on whether to add school choice or not. Uh school committee, you have a school choice. Presentation from the Department of Education in your packets. For the general public, um a quick summary, school choice is the ability for a district to provide. Open spaces to students who are outside the town or uh the municipality of the of the schools. Um there is a five thousand dollar uh tuition that follows a student if they go to another district. We do have some students that participate in school choice who live in Easton and um enroll in. Districts that accept school choice. We do not currently have school choice in Easton. It is sometimes, especially for districts that have a a. A deep decrease in enrollment and lots of open space. Uh they tend to use it as a revenue source. Unfortunately, in Easton right now, we do not have extra space. We are at our enrollment at this point. And so we have not had it traditionally for that reason. Uh I don't recommend it at this point because we don't have that um particular space for students of any of our grades. Um and so now it is open for number six on the agenda, which is a discussion and vote. On school choice by the school committee. Of course, if you have any questions for me. Uh about school choice, I'd be happy to answer those as part of your discussion.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Caroline?
I'll make comment. Um this is always uh. You know, even if we were to have some space in some classes. Uh obviously, once you accept someone for school choice, um they really have the right to remain until they graduate. And uh the anticipation that we have is that the enrollment in the early elementary school may actually increase. Because that has been the research, that when you build a new school. Uh especially at that level, you do e- experience an increase in enrollment, so I think it would be far too risky. Uh and particularly at a time when we don't know what exactly is going to be going on with the um pandemic in. In the fall, I think would be quite risky to um accept sh- school choice at this time.
Any other comments? It's my understanding we have have not done this before, is that correct historically?
Since school choice has begun, we have not done it. You are correct.
Alright, so we need to vote on this?
You do, yes.
Um so I would like to make a motion that we do not participate in school choice? Is that how I would word it?
If that is your choice, yes.
That's that's my motion. Um draw a second?
O'Neil, second.
Alright, roll call?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Excellent, thank you. Alright, next on the agenda is vote to approve a small plaque at R O in honor of an R O student. Dr. Cabral?
Uh unfortunately, R O endured um a horrible tragedy recently. Um a very lovely, dynamic young lady, Lindley Minard, passed away last year. She was a fourth grade student at Richardson Olmstead. Last summer, um members of the Richardson Olmstead community planted perennials around the flagpole in Lindley's memory. Lindley's family, with the help of friends, would like to post a small plaque near that flagpole and the flowers. Uh Chris Getchel is here to ask for the committee's position, uh permission, excuse me, to place the plaque. At R O along with Richard McGee, who is a parent of a student who is close friends with Lin- Lindley. And her family will be presenting the plaque. A mock-up of the plaque is available for you in your packet so that you can see what is on that plaque. And Mr. Getchel and Mr. McGee should be joining us and they are welcome um to speak at this time.
Thank you very much. Are you guys uh hearing me alright?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so if it's all right with you, I had a couple of slides we were hoping to show as well. Um and thank you for the kind words. Um you know, obviously it was a very difficult loss for so many people who are close with Lindley. She was a. One of the big pieces of her personality was how much she loved school. So you know, when we look back at uh the. The tough time she was going through, we would see her and visit her during her treatments and she was always asking. Who got my homework? Who who, when can I get back in the classroom? When can I come in and get caught up on what what's been happening in there? So. She was always proud to be a Parkview Panda when she moved over to Richardson Olmstead. She uh felt at home at the school immediately. Um she formed a special bond with Mr. Getchel, um Mrs. Sken, Mrs. Luke and uh her old neighbor, Mrs. Cunha. Um and throughout her time there, she absolutely loved everything about the school. She had an infectious personality. Anyone who was lucky enough to meet her even for a few minutes would always remember her. Her contagious giggle, uh her love of the color blue and really her sweet and generous personality more than anything else. Uh you know, unfortunately, as Dr. Cabral mentioned, in the fall of twenty nineteen, she was diagnosed with a very rare and aggressive form of brain cancer. And uh the R O community rallied around her immediately, uh cards, gifts, people dying their hair blue, blue bracelets. Everyone jumped right into it. And um a big piece of this uh after we lost her was the Memorial Garden of Blue, which Mr. Getchel was so supportive in uh. Everyone doing. So last summer, a group of people came out, uh the Thomas Family Palm Landscaping donated some. Uh mulch and some services to help get it in shape and we really overhauled the uh little area right out in front of the school. We added um. Let me click through, we've got a few pictures for you here as well. Um you know, and again, the strength that her family th- showed throughout all of this. Uh her parents, Cassie and Eric, uh her brothers, Luke and Griffin, who continue to be a rock for so many people through through a difficult time for. Them more than anything else. Um but again, everyone coming together to really honor this memory and legacy that she has. I mean, when we think about. How much she cared for her friends, how much she cared for her fellow students and what a big part of her life, the kinda educational experience was, we. We really felt like it was inspirational to a lot of people and we're hoping by putting a plaque there, it won't only be a way for her friends who are still in the school and the community to. To remember her and honor her, but for future students to come by and get that same kind of zest for life that she had and that love of education. We we hope it's something that'll pass down for generations here and by doing that, it'll help keep her in all of our hearts forever.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. That was beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Getchel?
I just wanna thank Rich McGee for putting that together. It was beautiful. It was a really tough time, but I I, you know. I think of Lindley every day, um and her, I know her and our school community does as well. And I think during this crazy year that we've been through, the strength of Lindley has given me so much perspective every day and um. Uh we won't forget it. Her family, the Menards are are probably some of the strongest people that I've ever met in my time in Easton. Um so this plaque means so much, this um garden means so much. I walk by it every single day, think of her. And on behalf of um the whole R O community, all the teachers, students, all her friends, all her soccer buddies. This means so much to to all of us and um uh thank you for putting this on the agenda tonight.
I'll make a motion to accept this beautiful plaque in honor of Lindley.
Wiseman, second.
Alright, roll call vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing um some of your memories of uh Lindley. I didn't know her, but I've. Heard so many wonderful things about her and the strength um. That she exhibited and just the zest of life. And it was really nice to actually get to finally see pictures because I again, my boys are older, so I didn't um. I didn't know her, but what a wonderful um tribute um from the schools and her friends in the community to her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um alright, so next on the agenda is the Wilson contract?
Yes, I'll have a uh assistant superintendent Pruitt answer any questions for you, but this is um a contract for. Foundation Kids, that's a phonics program for our K to three. And for the professional development to go with it. The total of the contract is one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, five hundred, excuse me, one hundred and thirteen. Thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Um this is a perfect opportunity. We're about to um combine all three of our elementary schools. We're getting them better aligned with the same resources, materials and approaches for our students. And uh I'll let Chr- Chrissy add anything she would like to and certainly any, answer any questions you may have uh about the program and about the contract.
So part of um our writing of our our curriculum units. Is that we ensure that we have a balanced literacy approach in our, in all of our um elementary grades, but especially looking at our primary grades. And ensuring that we have a strong um phonics program and phonemic awareness program. And that. Is something that we have found in our core program of Reading Street that has been missing. Um we are finding that um students that are getting referred for RTI interventions. Are needing more of a systematic phonics approach. And we find that foundations is a program that matches the need for our students in Easton. Um this will be used as a tier one support, so every student in kindergarten through third grade. Will, I'm sorry, preschool through third grade will be um receiving. Kindergarten through first, through third grade, sorry, there's some preschool materials, but it's not going to be an official program. Will be receiving instruction using fu- foundations. We can also utilize it for our tier two, which are students that um need additional support. In literacy instruction, so we're very excited about that. And then the complimentary program is Wilson or Orton Gillingham, which is what for our tier three support, which is what we are currently using already. Um for its students that receive tier three um intervention. So. We are really excited about this. This has been used throughout the district in particular classrooms. And we have looked at the data and seen the growth of the students that are using this particular program. And find it to be an extremely successful program and we're really excited about the opportunity to have it here in Easton for all of our students.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions, comments? Nancy?
Um you said grade three, but I'm looking at this um page. It would. Some of the grade two stuff be used for kids at grade three, is that what it is?
So what's happening for next year is because um because our students have not had it cons- consistently in all classrooms in grade two. What they've done is they have created a two-three. Kit that we will implement next year in grade three. So it has some things from s- from the second grade. That still meet the standards for third grade, but it's some skills that they'll be utilizing and then move on to third grade. The year after, the kids will already have the second grade um curriculum and program, so they will only be using the third grade. The year after, but then we're using this as like a transition. So the third grade teachers will participate in the second grade professional development and this is a transition kit. There will not be additional materials that will, that we will need to purchase. It's just for an additional, additional, slight additional cost. Um so that our third graders can immediately get it and get the program next year. Otherwise, they would have to wait a year. And we figured that since COVID and the gaps that we've seen in some of the, some of the learning. We thought it was essential to have it right away next year in third grade.
And the other question I had, it says quote expires four two. Is that gonna change the price that I, that it's now the twenty-nine?
No, in fact, actually, I I spoke with them today and it's still fine. I told them that I'm, I was um discussing this tonight with you and that we would, we would be, i- if upon your approval, we will be. Um moving forward tomorrow.
So all the, all the teachers, kindergarten through, at least next year, kindergarten through three and then the following year, kindergarten through two. Everybody will be doing this. Everybody will be on the same page.
Kindergarten through grade three will be doing this from now on.
Okay.
All great, all kindergarten, first, second and third grade teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Jen?
Quick, um this is, does the cost fall within the current year budget?
Okay, yeah, so we have twenty thousand dollars of it coming out of remaining Title One funds. Um and Title One funds and then the remainder of it is coming out of what we had already budgeted last year. Because we knew that this purchase was coming um out of our textbook line.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I know that we use this, I use this in my school with my teachers and they love it, I love it, the students love it and it is a very. Um effective program and um we've been really happy with it and use it in tier one, two, three also.
Yeah, and it's it's also great because one of our administrators, Anne Weintrub at Center School. Is also very well versed as as some of our reading specialists are as well, so it will be a great um. They'll be able to assist in the transition for some of our teachers that haven't implemented it.
Absolutely. Great. Alright, so we are looking for a. Uh vote to approve the contract and authorize the chair to sign the contract.
Wiseman, so moved.
O'Neil, second.
Alright, roll call?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Excellent, thank you. Alright, um personnel change or retirement of the R O occupational therapist?
Thank you. Cindy Lee Han is our retiree this evening. Cindy Lee Han began working in Easton uh as part of the Spoke Program as an occupational therapist in nineteen eighty-five. Uh she was officially hired in Easton Public Schools in September of nineteen ninety-six. Uh as an occupational therapist at Parkview School. She received professional teaching status in two thousand and has served as a mentor for several years in the district as well. Over the course of her thirty-plus years in Easton, she's worked in all of the school buildings. She currently calls R O her home as that is where her caseload is. Cindy plans to have a welter- deserved retirement starting September seventeenth, um two thousand twenty-one. Um we have. Had a huge turnover in our speech therapy uh department in the last two years. And um this is another great loss to the district. However, um as I've said before. Uh these are certainly well-deserved retirements. Cindy is just a lovely person and a consummate professional. And uh has done an excellent job literally at every school in our district. Uh you have a letter um to read on her behalf, Michelle.
Okay, thank you. Dear Dr. Alicia Cabral. I write this letter to announce my intention to retire as an occupational therapist from Easton Public Schools effective September seventeen, two thousand twenty-one. The September date was chosen to coincide with my sixty-third birthday and can provide an opportunity to orientate. My replacement. This letter could never be as witty as the one from Mr. Shores, my hilarious colleague. Who is also retiring at the same time. Ironically, we started our career together over thirty-five years ago. And at the Spoke Collaborative and um at both ended up in the same school in Easton. Richardson Olmstead is my homeschool. However, I've been fortunate enough to work at every school and with every principal. Chris Getchel is my principal and has been nothing but supportive and even though I informed him of my intention to retire on April Fool's Day. During my thirty-two years as an OT in the Easton Public Schools, I've been fortunate enough. To work with so many fine teachers and special students, sharing our collective skills set for the best uh possible outcome. My path frequently crosses with former students of all ages who stop to tell me about a lesson they remember from elementary school. Knowing that my career made an impact in the life of the students means everything to me. In my retirement, I look forward to spending more time with my grandchildren, biking as long as my needs allow it. Helping my mom in reading on my favorite beach. To all my EPS colleagues, students and parents, please accept the mo- my most sincere thanks. For allowing me to be as part of a special, of such a dedicated group of people. Respectfully, Cynthia Lee Han. Does anybody wanna make a comment?
Of course I do. Um. I know Cindy. Um she and her four daughters are fabulous. Um she's uh biked. Talking about biking, she's done the P M S challenge. Um she's always on the go, that's why she's such a. Great occupational therapist. Um but she is going to enjoy her retirement and especially, you know, with her grandchildren and so forth. So best wishes to Cindy.
Oops, Caroline, sorry.
I just wanted to say that I, I have known Cindy, I haven't seen her much lately, but she's such a warm and. Really kinda funny person. I mean, I can see that kids would really be drawn to her and having that, that. Special warmth, I think, is such a key uh criterion to be an excellent occupational therapist. Because that's a, you know, it's a very complex job really and uh it's certainly a loss. Uh that we're, you know, that we're losing some, that that some so experienced is losing air, is. Sorry, I'm bungling my words today, but it's certainly such a loss that we um will no longer have Cindy on board.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's not uh, she's not kinda funny, she is funny. She has a great sense of humor. She always has a smile, always has a smile on her face.
Jen?
Yeah, she genuinely just exudes joy and positivity and tremendous patience. Um I. I got to know her through one of my children and uh she was just such a great resource um. For uh for him and his learning and um it was so incredibly, just really delightful to work with. So we'll miss her and I wish her well in her retirement.
And I understand that she's not able to join us and I don't see her here, but I just want to pause for a moment in case she is. And would like to um and would like to join us, but I don't see that she is an attendee, which of course is perfectly fine.
There's a comment um related that I wanna read.
Yes.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay, it's from Alison Daly, thirty-two, Deverly Lane. I'm so proud of you, Mom. You are and always have been my inspiration. This year, above all, you have taught me, my children and all the children you have assisted to pivot and transition on a dime. EPS has been so fortunate to have you. We are so lucky to keep you.
Okay, that's priceless.
Yeah.
Cause any mom knows that's priceless.
That's sweet.
And she, she also just said, I'm here and love all these comments.
I'm glad. Thank you Cindy, glad you're here. Congratulations to you, it's well deserved.
Yeah, congratulations.
Alright, so I make a motion to accept the um retirement of Cynthia Lee Han with regrets. Have a second?
O'Neil, second, also with regret. O'Neil, yes.
O'Neil, yes?
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Alright, next up, vote to approve the National Teacher. Alright, next up, vote to approve the National Teacher Day proclamation. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you, uh in annually, we uh. Approve a national proclamation for uh a proclamation, excuse me, for National Teacher Day. Uh in Easton, we we are so fortunate to have the best of the best. Uh we refer to them as educators because um. We have many different roles in our schools and we all serve. You know, all of them serve as a teacher, an educator, a supporter, support staff. Uh and this year above all has certainly been. Very different than in past years. In the average year, our staff goes above and beyond. Uh this year, of course, had some extraordinary challenges and they have never disappointed. Or wavered in their commitment and dedication to our students, so. We have a proclamation in your packets to recognize May fourth, which is Teacher Appreciation Appreciation Day. But really, the entire week of appreciation week, May third to seventh. And we ask you to read the proclamation and we um support your vote to accept it, please.
National Teacher Appreciation Week, May third through the seventh two thousand twenty one. Whereas teachers open children's minds to the magic of ideas, knowledge and dreams and whereas. Teachers continuously refine their skills and enhance their instructional effectiveness and whereas teachers. Work collaboratively with other staff to create effective and safe schools and whereas. Teachers are more than instructional leaders, they fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, caregivers. And mentors who significantly impact the lives of children and. Whereas teachers work with parents in the community to support children. And whereas all educators have risen to the occasion during the times of crisis to provide academic, social. Emotional and physical supports for children and their families. Now, therefore, to honor all teachers and all educators who deserve the utmost respect. And adulation for all the contributions they continuously make to the Easton Public Schools. Especially during these unprecedented times. The Easton School Committee and the Superintendent of Schools proclaims the week of. May third through seventh two thousand twenty one as Teacher Appreciation Week. And Tuesday, May fourth, two thousand twenty one is National Appreciation Day. So we need a vote? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to um. Now, it doesn't say accept in a sign by the chair, but there's a spot for a sign by the chair, should I put that in the motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, um so then I make a motion that we accept the proclamation of National Teacher Appreciation Week and authorize um. The school committee chair to sign. Do you have a second?
Second.
Star, second.
Okay, roll call.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
Deluca, yes.
Wassman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you, alright.
I I just wanted to add that we have a an extremely supportive parent core. And uh family and community groups who have always been just wonderful at expressing their appreciation for teachers. I would just like to remind people, there certainly doesn't have to be a co- a cost involved as a teacher for twenty years. Um just like being a mom, uh the most touching moments come from our students. So I like to remind children and young adults to just. A quick thank you to a teacher, uh or a very influential educator next week. Will be so very much appreciated, so if you could encourage. Your children to perhaps reach out to one or more of educators who have made a difference for them. I can't tell you how much uh that means to people who care so much about those students.
Very true, thank you. Alright, vote to approve the school council presentation schedule? Dr. Cabral?
Each year, the school committee approves the school council presentation schedule. Right now, we have the middle school and high school. Scheduled to present on May twentieth at the regularly scheduled school committee meeting. And the pre K to two schools who have presented together for the last several years. And Richardson Ol- Olmstead presenting at the June tenth regularly scheduled school committee meeting. And so that is for your discussion and vote for approval. Um to make sure that those are scheduled and put on those agendas.
Now on here is um, okay, I see, the two on May twenty, alright, thank you. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? No, can I have a motion to accept the um school council presentation schedule?
Wassman so moved.
Second?
O'Neil, second.
Alright, roll call, vote?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
Deluca, yes.
Wassman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Alright, vote vote to appoint um the superintendent to the By County Collaborative. Board of Directors Directors for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Dr. Cabral?
So it's that time of year when you have um all of these votes coming up at once, so there are several votes this evening. This one is uh specific to the By County Collaborative. The By County Collaborative is a special education collaborative, a consortium, if you will, of. Um multiple districts that uh pool our resources, our facilities and our funds to have our students. Be considered members of the collaborative. We enjoy a uh member rate when we have students participate in the classes, whether it is. Uh a full-time placement or part-time. I recommend that I continue on the Byco Board of Directors, it gives us. The opportunity to enjoy that member tuition rate, but also provides a seat at the table. For the conversations about um the direction of the collaborative, the programming that's offered. The professional development that staff receive, the budget and so forth. So I would recommend appointment uh of myself. For uh membership once again uh on the Byco Board of Directors. Our superintendents, myself and my predecessors have. Uh all served in this capacity and we have found it to be a successful collaboration thus far.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Can I get a motion to approve um? Dr. Cabral to the Board of Directors for the By Collaborative, By County Collaborative?
Okay.
It's nice being on.
O'Neil, second.
Second, alright, um roll call?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes?
Deluca, yes.
Wassman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you, alright. Vote to appoint members to the town and school subcommittees, I'm gonna need a little help on this one, guys. From my experience, people, do we just vote through them one by one and how? I'm trying to remember how we did it last year.
So immediately following the vote each year, the school committee. Determines if the representatives on the multiple boards in town is going to remain static. Or if there are going to be any changes, of course. I- in this instance, all of the members of the school committee remained intact, obviously, that isn't always the case. And so sometimes you do need to shuffle members around. Or it's also considered sort of a a term period a- as well, if you will. And if someone is interested in removing themselves for from a committee. Or maybe getting involved in another one, it gives them an opportunity to do that. So the current committees are in your packets as well as who currently serves on those committees. And so you can go through each of them and see if the current member would like to remain, if someone else is interested in it. Or if someone would like to um. Remove themselves from that post if someone else would like to take their place. And then you would vote on those, that then gets submitted to uh the town clerk.
Okay. And then I know some of these are inactive, so we just confirm that they're inactive. Um so the Academic Review Subcommittee, that's still inactive, is that correct?
Yes.
Act the Easton's Committee is still inactive. Animal Assistant Therapy Oversight Committee? I haven't really think about that. Alright, the next is Audit Committee with Jen. You wanna stay on that, does some?
I'm happy to stay on if somebody has a burning desire to join the Audit Committee. I would, I would uh be willing to relinquish and give somebody else that opportunity, but I. I truly don't mind being on the Audit Committee, I enjoy it, it's a nice group.
Alright, is anyone?
I think truly not minding is as good as it gets for the Audit Committee.
No, there is. No reflection on the committee members or the work that it does, it is, it's living in the world, it's very tedious details for sure, but.
Is Jen, is the committee still active at this time?
It is.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, and Jen also has the expertise, I think, certainly surpasses any that we have, so the rest of us have, so. It's perfect fit.
I agree. Alright, so we're gonna leave Jen there, then the Children's Museums of Easton Board, that's Jackie.
Yeah, it hasn't met even before covid, they haven't, since the new executive director has taken over, we haven't met. So I can reach out to her just to see if she's even still. Having a Board of Advisors, I mean, they have a Board of Directors there, the Board of Advisors was much more of a informal role. So I can reach out and see if that's still gonna be active. If you would like me to.
That would be wonderful, so we'll leave you there for now until you tell us otherwise?
Okay.
Okay. Curriculum um Coordinating Council, that's inactive still. ECAT Subcommittee, Nancy.
Uh be more than happy to stay.
Alright, everyone good with that? Good. Um Fee Committee, Caroline and Nancy.
Um I'm happy to stay on and uh but I'm also happy to relinquish the position. They Fee really has not been meeting for quite a number of months and I, but I'm assuming that at some point it will be. Back up and running, but obviously because of the pandemic, there there hasn't really been um. Active fundraising, um so um anyway, I'm happy to stay on, but if somebody has. As uh Jen put it, a burning desire to replace me on that committee, I, you know. Would certainly be willing to do that as well, it's a wonderful, wonderful organization and. Certainly, the people who are members of Fee have just gone above and beyond to support schools. So it's certainly no reflection on them that there hasn't been the opportunity to fundraise actively in the last uh quite a few months.
I agree.
I was going to mention about Fee that since they've gone, they're now a um, what is it called Caroline, they're a.
Five oh one C three, yeah.
Right.
Nonprofit, yeah, registered nonprofit.
Not like before where they really were like part of the school department and we did have. We probably don't need two school committee members on it. I'm willing to stay, I have no problem, they're a great group of people to work with. Um I I guess we would have to talk to Lisa and see if, you know, she wanted to let one of us go.
I'm glad you reminded me because there was discussion um early on when the initiative to make it a five oh one C three um. Was started, you know, uh. That probably there would just be a school committee sort of advisor and it would just be one person, so you're exactly right and I'm certainly willing to. Hand that entire role over to you, but uh you're right, we probably should talk to Lisa. So we could probably vote on this as, you know, kind of based on what Lisa prefers, but that if. Uh if we go according to what the original plan was, that it just would be Nancy, that makes sense.
Okay, thanks, yep. Okay, sorry, we'll come back to how to word that at the vote. Um the Food, Virus, Re and Wellness Subcommittee, last year we noted that it's inactive. I've never heard from them in all my time on school committee, so I'm assuming that's inactive and they don't need anybody? Does anybody know differently?
Lori Han was very uh, you know, involved with that committee and um. I I feel like the committee was engaged in more initiatives at that point, you know, with her involvement. But I agree with you, I haven't heard. Um haven't heard much since, but I think it is an official committee, isn't it, Lisha, that has Marilyn and. This food services person and and some other folks like that on it?
Yes, uh they haven't met in in a bit, we did have a lot of work that was happening at the time where we needed the committee. It was required to have the committee, uh I think it is still required to have the committee, so I would vote to keep someone on that and Marilyn can reach out and let you know. About the level of activity of that going forward.
I'm happy to stay on it if it turns into anything unless somebody else wants to. Stay on it unless it turns into anything. Don't go jumping once. Alright, Frothingham.
It's yours, Michelle.
Alright, Frothingham Memorial Corporation Board of Directors, Nancy.
So um as it states in the uh description, the school committee chair, so tag, you are it, you get to be at this show.
I didn't read that part.
They meet, they meet once a, they meet once a year for like a half an hour.
A very heavy lift, that committee.
Yeah.
Alright, and a very interesting group of people.
Quite a cast of characters on that committee, they're awesome.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, it is a great group.
Read the fine print. Alright, Human Rights Committee, um I'm really enjoy that and I'm happy to stay on it, but I'm also happy to. Let someone else do it if they want to.
Michelle, you are the Human Rights. Committee person, I think, I mean, you've been very involved and you've been very supportive of the committee and and keeping us informed, so I. Think you should stay on.
Thank you, I I really do like it, I mean, I but I. I don't know if somebody else wants to. Okay, so the next would be. School Planning Committee, yes, with Jackie and Caroline.
I'd certainly like to stay, having invested three years already. I hate to abandon that role at this time.
Same with you, Jackie?
Yeah, I feel the same way, I mean, we're we're right, we're right at that finish line, you know? I'd like to stay on till the end.
And we've kinda gotten through a lot of the boring stuff, so. You know, the very technical.
Okay, none of it is boring, that's like the best committee ever.
That's a good point, it's it's very technical sometimes, but not necessarily boring, it's been a great learning experience, quite frankly.
Alright, um Municipal Building Committee, it's Nancy and um Jane.
So we would have to vote, you know, Jane back again as the school committee appointee since she's not part of the school committee, but. We would have to appoint her and yes, I'm willing to stay on that committee.
Do we know?
This point of information for the public, um I know you're aware of this, but the reason that you have. Um appointed Jane on this is because she is the chair of the School Planning Committee. And throughout the course of this project, it's been very beneficial to have someone that is working across both of the committees. And so uh if if anyone is wondering what is the connection, that would be the connection there.
So she's willing to stay on, is that correct?
To my knowledge, she is, yes.
Voter she?
We're not, we're not gonna give her a choice.
We'll just vote it. Alright, um naming campaign, Caroline and Nancy.
So so Caroline and I really need to get on this because now we're gonna have the Blanchean School. So I think I would like to stay on, I don't know about Caroline, but I would be more than happy to.
I'd be happy to stay on, but again, if if someone were very eager to be involved with that, I I wouldn't, you know, I would. Be happy to relinquish the role, I mean, we haven't really had anything to do in the last year or so. To speak of, but um I I agree with Nancy, it it'll probably, we hope that it does pick up with the new school.
I agree. Um anyone? Alright.
Sounded like the Ferris Bueller, Ferris Bueller, anyone, anyone?
Bueller, bueller, um Negotiation Subcommittee and. I don't know if this is the one we talked about, Caroline and Jackie, is this the one where at some point Jen's stepping up?
Well, I'm hoping that she will, I mean, we haven't talked about it for some time, but I think Jen really has. Such a good grasp of all things budgetary and of so many other factors that are. Um involved with the negotiations and and I've been doing it. Really, most of my twenty eight years, I think I've done that that committee for twenty five of the twenty eight years, so. I feel like um, you know, it's time for someone with some new ideas and fresh approaches to step up if if you're willing, Jen.
Uh yeah, if uh if everybody else agrees to it, I'd be happy to step into the Negotiation Subcommittee.
And that committee, of course, will become quite active next year as we have um all of our bargaining contracts will be open for negotiation next year.
And my understanding is most of the meetings happen um late afternoon.
Yes, they happen outside of school hours.
Right after school.
Correct.
Okay, great, yep, yep.
Yeah, and I'd like to stay on that committee if if that's possible.
Okay, so Jen and Jackie? You, you sure you're alright with that Caroline?
Yep.
Okay. Um, Policy Subcommittee Nancy and Jackie.
It's a great committee.
It is a great committee. When are we gonna meet?
Wait a minute. I can't think of two better people than Nancy and Jackie to be on that committee. Excellent choices.
There's so much paper, it's ridiculous, but yes, I'll stay.
Yeah, I will too.
Um, Steam Committee, I have been on the Steam Committee. I don't, obviously hasn't met this year or since COVID. Um, Chrissy, is that something that's gonna be picking back up?
Yes, it will be.
Okay. I'm, I'm happy to do it unless somebody wants to do it.
You have the interest, I think you should stay on.
Definitely have the interest in Steam. Alright, um, and Town Budget Subcommittee Jackie and Caroline.
I'd like to stay on that. Um, we haven't, we've only met, what, once or twice since the, since the pandemic started, but I expect that it will start up again on a monthly basis, but, um, you know, it's an interesting committee, but I, and I do think it's, uh, you know, helpful to have the two members of the school committee on it, so I'd like to stay on.
I'd like to stay on too, if possible.
Okay. Um, and then I have a question before we vote. Uh, this other paper with the term ending representatives. Um, it looks like we did it after the last June election and it looks like it renews every June. Is that something we're talking about now or was it just in our packet for information?
For information.
Okay, then we don't need to worry about those. Alright, so.
Can I interrupt? Did what we, I don't know, Dr. Cabral, if this is gonna happen again or not, but the Superintendent Advisory Committee? I assume that once COVID is, you know.
Yes, it absolutely is, yes. Um, you had decided prior that you were, uh, rotating as a committee. That's entirely up to you if you'd like to keep doing that.
It's fine with me. It's up to everybody else because, um, it was, it's a great committee because the population of the committee is so diverse and it's just, I mean, it's not like any other committee I'm on, so I like the idea of the rotation because everybody got a taste of, you know, the, the, uh, that climate.
Dr. Cabral.
Too. I think it's, it's a good idea to rotate. Sorry, what, Michelle?
Well, my question was for, um, Dr. Cabral. Um, did you find that it was, it was helpful or did you find that, cause you're, you're constantly planning and doing things and to have somebody knew every time, would, did that interrupt like the continuity of what you were doing? I like the expectation, don't get me wrong, but.
Yeah, no, uh, it really didn't. I'm happy. It, it, either way will work for the committee. Uh, it is the, the Superintendent Advisory Committee, uh, as I think, gosh, who just said it? Nancy, I think, just said it's a, it's a very diverse group representing many of our communities and subgroups in the town. I'm very appreciative of their input. It's really to advise me and so, you know, um, vis a vis advise you, right? Because I'm advising you as we go forward, so it really is, uh, an opportunity for me to hear from stakeholders uh, representing many different views and, and through different lenses, which can only enhance, uh, my understanding going forward, I believe, on some very important issues. This year, unfortunately, it's really been prohibitive for us to, to have that even virtually, uh, but it's definitely going to continue, uh, next year. So either way works just fine. Uh, it's totally up to the committee how you would like to do that.
Well, sounds like everyone.
I also think it should be added to the list too. It's not on the list.
Okay, we can do that.
Advisory Committee.
Sure.
So to this list Nancy?
No, 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 this list, the one we're looking at, this one.
The regular list.
The regular, this list.
We're gonna add.
Superintendent Advisory Committee. Lynn will, Lynn will put it on there. Lynn's the best.
Yep.
Yes. Michelle?
Yes.
I just wanted to add that I actually think it's probably helpful to have the rotation so that the members of the advisory committee themselves get to kind of meet each of the school committee members or have some, you know, some opportunity to interact with them.
That's a really good point.
No, I agree that that is a benefit. I know they enjoy meeting all of you and having you present for the conversations.
Excellent. Alright, so we'll add that. So we won't look at that till June, so some direction on this one. We need to vote on this. Do we vote and just say with changes as mentioned or how do we word that Caroline?
I don't think there's any particular, you know, constraints on how we decide to word it. I think that's the perfect way to do it. Unless anyone else thinks that we need to do it committee by committee. I don't think we ever have done it committee by the committee. I think we've always done the whole batch together.
Unless anyone wants to put a hold on a particular ki- committee to have a further conversation and then you vote the others and then you continue to discuss. But it really sounded like you had come to consensus unless I'm hearing that wrong. Um, so you certainly could, someone could make a motion to accept them all as noted.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept all the committees as deliberated.
Weisman second.
Alright, Roll Call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Clarence, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Weisman, yes.
Star, yes.
Thank you. Alright, um, District Update, Dr. Cabral.
I, I have, uh, three items or really two items this evening for this. Uh, one is, of course, we are, we are back from vacation. Uh, we appreciate everyone who has worked in cooperation with us. Uh, we, we are well aware, I'm well aware certainly, that there was a, um, group of people that were, um, in disagreement with the policy that the school committee, uh, and the school nurses and the Director of Health and myself put forward. But I just wanna express my sincere appreciation for their cooperation in helping us to make this as effective as it can possibly be for the health and welfare of all of our staff and all of our children and young adults. I understand it is not always convenient. I understand some people don't comply and we are aware of some of those people. There will always be a population we aren't aware of. But the vast majority, uh, including those who may disagree have really been helpful and cooperative. And I know on behalf of the school nurses, on behalf of the school administration team and on behalf of central office administration team, we just express our sincere thanks for that. We understand that none of this has been easy on any of us. We certainly didn't dissuade anyone from traveling. We understand the important benefits of that, particularly in a year like this one. And, uh, we appreciate the assistance, especially that the school nurses have received because it was a tremendous amount of um, data and information for them to process. So, again, you know, we, we are only as good as our partnering and our cooperation with one another. And I think that even for those that may not have agreed with the policy, um, it provides a very, very strong model for our children and our young adults to see that even though we may not agree with something, we can successfully work through it together uh, as adults, as leaders, as parents in the district. And I just wanna thank everyone for their cooperation with those efforts. The second is that we do have a, a ch- a, a recommended change through the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health, which I would recommend this evening for your, um, input. It is, it can be a little bit confusing, so I just wanna make sure that I articulate this very clearly and we do have written information that we are going to be sending out. It has to do with close contacts, but it is extremely specific in its implementation. And so I just, again, I wanna make sure I explain it clearly and if not, uh, I'm hoping that if any of the committee members have questions, clarifying questions, that, that hopefully I can, and provide that clarification. Uh, they are recommending that in only two, in, in the, two very specific situations only. When children are sitting in their classroom or when children are sitting on the school bus. A close contact is and will continue to be defined as six feet or less. However, in those two applications only, in those two settings in the classroom and on the bus, if they are wearing masks, only students from three feet and less will need to quarantine if they are identified as a close contact. The school department is still responsible for sending letters home to parents as we have, uh, letting them know that their child is a close contact, even if they're at six, five, four feet. But it does explain that they will not have to quarantine. If the family chooses to quarantine, that's certainly perfectly fine and we will support that. But it is not mandatory or we suggest that it would not be mandatory. Now, again, the reason that I feel it, it could potentially be confusing is because it's only in those two very specific situations. In other words, in the hallways, during lunch, uh, on the playground, during extracurriculars, any sporting activities, literally anywhere other than the bus and the classroom. Students are, um, still required to quarantine if they come into contact with someone who's positive at six feet or less. It's only on the bus or in the classroom per the Department of Public Health and per D E S I where that exception to the three to six foot quarantining would take place. Okay, uh, are there any questions about that? I just wanna make sure that I explain that clearly. Some people have said that they're not sure they understand it because it doesn't seem to make sense that it's only there and not other places, but that was very clearly articulated to us and that is, um, what the recommendation is. Jackie?
Uh, did they, um, did, did D E S I give, uh, any background on how they came about to that decision, um, especially with regard to it just being in these two circumstances?
Uh, in regard to the two circumstances, other than that they, uh, seem to be the most structured times in a student's day, uh, the most supervised time in a student's day, um, not, not more than that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. I think there was another question.
Thought I saw Jen's answer. Yeah, I had the same question. Just what was their rationale for?
Yeah, and there is documentation on the department website. We did speak to the Commissioner this week um, to review this information and as I said, they are providing us written documentation that we can then send out. So we will do that as soon as we have it, uh, we'll process that, we'll send it out. And then the letters that families will receive will be slightly different. Um, depending on the setting of where they were identified as a close contact and then depending on if they were three or less feet or six or less feet apart.
Caroline?
Um, well, first a comment. I know that, uh, most, probably most of you saw the new study from MIT that seemed to indicate that distance itself is less of a factor in terms of transmission. Masks, of course, are critical, but once, uh, a group of people is in an enclosed space for any length of time at all, sometimes even less than fifteen minutes, but certainly for hours, that essentially the risk in terms of close contact transmission is about the same for everyone in the room. So it's not, it's not that it's completely safe at three feet compared to six feet or vice versa. It's just that after a group has been in a room for, um, a period of time, essentially the, the spread of any kind of infectious aerosol is, is pretty much throughout the room. Um, so I, I don't see any point in not supporting this new guideline. Um, I think it makes sense. Um, but I do have a question about, um, the, you know, when the kids are eating in the cafeteria, would we go back to this? I, I know that's not a classroom, so presumably that would go back to the six feet. Um,
That is correct. Anywhere other than those two very specific scenarios, then we are to consider anyone six feet or less, um, a close contact that has to quarantine.
But my second question is about the mask breaks. Um, presumably those are fewer than fifteen minutes.
Uh, that depends and it's, the definition still says fifteen minutes cumulatively, so if a class, for example, has three seven-minute mask breaks, then that would technically be, uh, fifteen minutes. But we are really fortunate that it's the time of the year that we're, we're trying to do all of those maskless activities, um, i.e. ma- uh, mask breaks, lunch, et cetera, outside as much as possible. And so even, you know, we're separating more than six feet and then, of course, being in the outdoors makes a big difference in terms of ventilation and air cir- circulation. So, uh, yeah, it, that, it, it is still six feet whenever a mask is off, but it's also six feet for identifying for quarantine in anything other than those two specific instances, which would include mask break.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Dr. Cabral?
Okay, the last thing is, uh, I am going to announce during the Superintendent Notes, the leadership structure for the new Blanche Ames School. It's not really a district update, so I'm gonna save that for Superintendent Notes, but I just wanted you to know that that's coming. We did meet with the entire staff today and announced it to them and so we're going to announce it to the school committee, announce it publicly and then we will have it published, uh, in a press release as well.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else?
Nope, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Public comments? Chrissy, is there any?
Michelle, I'm sorry, can I just ask one question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I, did the new data come out yet about, um, the COVID rates in the schools for this week?
Yes, we sent that to D E S I. Uh, we don't have, or it may have come out after five o'clock. It comes out at five o'clock for the state. And so I never have it in time for this meeting.
It did just get published?
It, it's published on the dashboard. It was published yesterday.
Yeah, our school information is published on both of our dashboards, but the state information comes out during this meeting every week, so we'll add that to the dashboard either late this evening or early tomorrow morning.
No, I was just, I was just wondering about our school.
Yes, it's on the dashboard.
Okay.
I, I'm, um, that is updated every Wednesday afternoon.
Okay, anyone else? I'm sorry. Alright, public comments, Chrissy, I don't.
There are none.
Okay. Uh, Superintendent Notes, Dr. Cabral.
Okay, I should've just kept going. So we are very, uh, excited, of course, about the new Blanche Ames Project. We've certainly, we had the groundbreaking, which of course was, uh, just thrilling to see the, the work that's already been done in a very short amount of time. We can see progress already. The, uh, video of the most recent artist renderings and drawings, uh, it has been available. I, I know that Jane, speaking of School Planning Committee and, um, speaking of the School Planning Committee, I know that Jane and, um, the administration of the school are updating the project website and so that video will be on there shortly if it's not there already. I really encourage everyone to take a look at it. After so many years of talking about it, it is very exciting, especially for people who uh, aren't as visual perhaps and now can see the vivid colors, the creativity, the, the spaces, the engagement for children, the, um, the school as a teacher. There is a narrative that goes along with it where the principal architect is describing all of these areas and so uh, it, it's really something that I think is a nice pick-me-up for people. It's also showcases the school as a whole, so, uh, I think it's important for the community to keep in mind that while it's a pre-K to two school and it really hasn't been our experience here in Easton that we make a lot of community use of our pre-K to two schools because of their size. Uh, this is going to definitely be a community space. It was one of the major tenets that we developed the school by, was that it would be used for community purposes and I think that people will see in the design that it is certainly child-friendly. Everything is created very specifically for the pre-K to two population. And I think that's quite a rare opportunity to have and it is exciting in itself. But it's got a sophistication of design that makes for some spaces that adults can readily and comfortably make use of. But it's got a sophistication of design that makes for some spaces that adults can readily and comfortably make use of as well. So we're excited to share that with the community. In terms of the leadership structure, we currently have three principals, no assistant principals, and we have this new building. One of our other major tenants, of course, from the beginning has been, how are we going to keep this large school? Uh, small for these tiniest learners to, to be inside of. And so from the physical structure to now the leadership structure, we have always had an eye toward uh, small learning communities. And so with that in mind, Chrissy and I worked with the three principals to come up with a structure that we felt really. Uh, embodied that idea with uh, the professionals we have in place. We were very fortunate that we did not have to look outside of Easton. We had no desire to do so. We have three very competent, capable and experienced principals. Uh, they were very generous with their time, met with me uh, a few times and discussed their views. Of what the school and the children would need, as well as their own professional and personal goals and interests going forward. Chrissy and I then put together a structure that I think uh, is at least a very good beginning for this building. And its current needs of bringing three independent schools together as, as one culture. Which is a, a challenge in and of itself, of course, uh, but also to keep that small school component in mind. And we presented this to the three professionals and they accepted, were thrilled that they accepted. They've already started meeting and talking with one another. Now that we announced this to the staff, they are going to be putting together a transition team to lead the staff forward on many. Large and small and nitty gritty details that go into bringing three schools together. And so the leadership structure of that building is going to be. Uh, Sam Cedarbaum, who's the current Parkview Principal, will be the principal of the Blanche Ames School. He will be the overall administrator for all grades. But his special education background lends itself very well to his um, experience. And his interest in special education. Our pre K pro- program is a special education program. And so he will a- again, be in charge of the entire building with a focus on pre K and K. He also uh, will be working closely with Teresa Skinner on our special education programs throughout the district. So over the last six years, we've really endeavored to provide these in district programs that Easton's never had before. And they've been quite successful and have served our students extremely well. Uh, being able to, uh, enabling us to keep our children uh, educated within district, with their neighborhood peers and, and friends. And because of that, because of that, um. We have just finished having the final piece of these programs put into all schools. So our master plan is in place. Now is the perfect opportunity for Sam with his experience with Teresa. And the special education coordinators to look at the vertical articulation of those special education programs, literally from pre K to twelve. So that's gonna be a big part of his job in the, in the, at least in the beginning as well, um, to make sure that those are articulated well and work. Um, particularly in those transition years, grade two to three, grade five to six and grade nine, uh, excuse me, eight to nine. So Sam will be the principal of the school. This is going to be a big school, of course, and so we, we did not want, we didn't feel that an assistant principal was appropriate. And uh, we were fortunate to have the skills of an experienced principal in Tom Higgins. So Tom is the current uh, Moreau Hall principal. We've asked him and he has accepted a position as the associate principal of Blanche Ames. He will be specifically focused on grades one and two. That is a, a, a much larger population than he currently has um, at Moreau Hall. So it's a perfect opportunity for growth for him as well. It's also, uh, he is relinquishing the English Language Learner Director position that he's had. Traditionally in this district, the smallest elementary school, in this case Moreau Hall, has also assumed that role. Um, he's going to give up that role and he will be the associate principal for grades one and two. And then finally, Anne Weintraub, um, she is currently the principal at Center School. She's going to assume that role of the coordinator of English Language Learners, which is an interest for her and, and. Uh, a talent of hers. She's very good at that. And she's also going to serve as the pre K to two curriculum coordinator. We felt that it was extremely important to have all three of the principals physically start. Or physically be um, their home base, if you will, in the new Blanche Ames School. As the transition is happening, even though there's one principal now, uh, we fe- we know that the transition is going to be. A challenge for staff, not for children, surely, because they will be entering a school they don't know the difference. Uh, even the second graders will only have been in the school for one, maybe two years. So the biggest transition, of course, is, is going to be for the staff. And we think it's important for their trusted point person, if you will, to be in the building for them to feel as though they have someone they can confer with. Look for advice from as they make this transition. Um, Anne will be responsible for issues of curriculum and instruction and assessment for pre K to two. Pre K to two in our district is in a unique situation. They're the only grade band that doesn't reside in one building. And so as we've done our understanding by design work in our curriculum units. It has been an added challenge for them to be physically in three different places. Since we knew the Blanche Ames School was going to uh, come to fruition. Those three leaders have worked very closely together in, in their great team, which made this even more of a dream um, to come to reality. They have endeavored to get these three communities together as much as possible, whether it's through professional development, shared school, um. School council, uh, school improvement plans, um, P T As have worked together on projects. And um, staff meetings. So that's different, however, than being in the same building. And having opportunities to have your data meetings together, um, to have grade level meetings together regularly. This will give them the opportunity to do that. So Anne uh, will start pre K to two. It's a little unusual to have a coordinator just for pre K to two, but again, because we know that uh, this is going to be. Uh, a challenge to bring three different cultures in a, by culture. I don't only mean the climate in the school, but also the materials that are used, the, the um, the pedagogy that's used. The protocols and policies that are used. And so it's really going to need to have all hands on deck. We really wanna be proactive and make sure that the staff is supported as much as possible. But it does offer opportunity for growth in the future. As Anne is in this role, we will ask her, of course, to advise us as we go forward. Ultimately, if we see this role growing from pre K to two to pre K to five. And then after a, a couple of years of its implementation, we will meet as a team. And we will determine how we might work, move forward with uh, curricular coordination. But we think, uh, at least for the first couple of years, this is a perfect proactive approach to making sure that the staff is properly supported. Um, that some very important initiatives that been, have been started can continue to develop. And we are extremely confident in the three leaders that we have in these roles. And just excited to have them lead the wonderful staff in this wonderful building. It's just going to be, um, you know, i- it's, it's setting Blanche Ames School off as a school of excellence right from the start. And so we're very happy that they all accepted. Um, they have already, as I said, started working together. And will soon put together that transition team where they're gonna be looking for a lot of input on big, small and in the middle things that they need to work on. And it literally will take the next year and a half to get all those hammered out. So we're excited about this announcement. We will be, um, we will be publicizing this. We will be doing a press release on it. And I offer my sincere congratulations to all three of these professionals, all three experiencing. Um, an opportunity for development and growth in Easton. And we're just so happy to have them and um, ready to support them as well. So my sincere congratulations to the three of them. And that's all I have for superintendent notes, unless you have questions about that.
Questions, comments? Well, I think it's wonderful that we're able to keep all three of them. Um, and keep the, the history of all three schools and the history of um. You know, their place in, in importance in Easton and bring them all together for a common goal. And I agree that um, the students are gonna love that, seeing all the familiar faces. It's hard enough to just, to transfer a building and new, you know, structure. And you don't know where anything is or whatever, but to be able to find a familiar face that you trust and um. I, I think it's wonderful. I'm thrilled that we're keeping them. All right, um.
Oh, Caroline, sorry.
Oh, Caroline.
I, I just wanted to applaud uh, you, Dr. Cabral and Chrissy for really honing in. On the special talents that each of these wonderful principals have. And um, I, I think it's, it's gonna be just such a strong team and, and unique. So I, I um, I really wanna applaud you and Chrissy for, for coming up with such a thoughtful plan.
Thank you. It was, it was um, very much with the help of the three principals and so we appreciate their contributions as well. Thank you for that, Caroline.
Anyone else? Well, all right, su- assistant superintendent notes.
I actually do have some announcements for you today or some, some updates. The first is regarding our Anti-Defamation League Peer Leadership Program. On April fourteenth, ten Oliver Ames students, along with three hundred active A D L peer leaders, attended the twenty-sixth annual youth conference. Our conference or Congress. This year's Congress was titled Justice for All, a Peer Leadership Summit, and focused on exploring what it means for every single person in this country. To be treated with respect and dignity. Um, they explored the nature and impact of prejudice and developed strategies that promote inclusive school communities. In which cultural, racial and other human differences are valued and respected. Our students, along with Kathy Quealy, one of our assistant principals at Oliver Ames, and advisors, just absolutely raved about the event. So I wanted to share that with you and also to let you know that we are planning on um, having this, having the peer leadership program. In the middle school next year. We are finalizing um, who the staff advisors will be. And because they will be trained over the summer and then our staff will be trained in the, this coming fall. So I'm happy to report that for you. And also exciting, in my opinion, extremely exciting announcement, is that, first of all, as you all know, athletics has the M I A A. That supports, that provides support and guidance. They've been instrumental in getting our sports going throughout the Commonwealth so our kids can have some normalcy. Music does not have such an organization. However, in Easton, we are fortunate to have Jeff Benson, our K to twelve music department head. Jeff has been working with me and, and Mr. Paul on how to have performances for our, our um, Easton Middle School and O A students. And with the support of the Board of Health, I'm happy to inform you that we will be hosting three performances for our students. The concert band will perform on Monday, May seventeenth, outside in the stadium. Um, due to the size of the band, only parents or guardians of seniors will be able to attend. More information will be coming on that. The concert will be livestreamed for anyone else that would like to see the performance, which is a great opportunity. Um, also, the show choir will host a performance outside in this, in the stadium on June fourth. Again, um, the, the audience will be limited. Our orchestra will also have their performance. Um, but they will be, they are able to perform inside. Our orchestra does not have any wind instruments. In fact, all instruments are string instruments. So this performance will take place on May eleventh. And orchestra members will have two tickets per, per performer for family to sit in the audience. Um, concert choir will not be able to have a performance this year, unfortunately. I thought um, many of you would love to hear that, that um, Jeff has been really instrumental. He's been a great addition to our department head team this year and he always comes with solutions. Um, and I think that this is such a great opportunity for our students to have this, again, sense of normalcy. Where they will be able to perform together in these venues.
I think we need this sense of normalcy too.
Yeah.
Very much miss these performances and I think parents and the public do as well. So many thanks to Mr. Benson and to Kristen Kennedy from the Board of Health.
Absolutely.
And you as well, Chrissy.
Oh.
For helping to put all this together. We're very excited to, to see these performances.
Right. Caroline?
Are, are all three livestreamed? You, you mentioned that the first was, but?
You know, the, he, he talked about the first one by being livestreamed, but I, I'm thinking that they will be, but I will, I will um, get a definite answer for that. And let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Show choir, you said is having a uh, performance and they sing and dance. So I'm a little confused why concert um, choir cannot.
It's the size. It's the size of um, how many are in the show choir compared to the concert choir. There are too many students in the concert choir.
They couldn't spread out on the away field or anything?
Not that what, uh, not with six, not with um, ten feet apart. They need to be ten feet apart when they're singing.
Okay.
Yeah. Trust me, if, if it could've been done, Jeff would've found a way.
No, I, I know, I know. He's, he's working magic this year. I just, you know.
Uh, I also wanna update you on M C A S. Um, we are able to offer remote administration for the, for, of the grades three through eight tests. To accommodate families who chose to have their children learn remotely through the end of the school year. This accommodation is for students in grades three through eight only and will be coordinated with building administrators. Our administrators attended a webinar on remote administration today and more information will be coming soon. Please note that students in high school are not allowed to participate in M C A S remotely at this time. If a student is learning remotely, they will need to work with the Oliver Ames um, administrators to take the assessment at, in school. Um, the M C A S schedules for Easton have been created for all M C A S grades. And if you do, if you are not aware of what those schedules are, they will be coming shortly. On um. Last, the week bef- maybe it was last week, the Massachusetts Board, I looked over here at my calendar. The Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education voted to modify the state graduation requirement for students in grade eleven. The class of twenty twenty-two, so that they would not need to pass the English Language Arts and Mathematics M C A S to meet the state graduation requirement. This is already the case with the science and technology and engineering part of that requirement. Grade eleven students um, who choose to take M C A S in gra- in, for E L A and math tests. For scholarship purposes, may do so in spring or in this spring or the fall of twenty twenty-one. I know that the Oliver Ames Administration has sent out surveys to families to see which they would prefer um, for administration. If they are interested in taking the M C A S for um, scholarship purposes. Um, students who test this spring will have results in the fall, in time to learn whether they qualify for scholarships before applying to colleges. Are there any questions about M C A S? Okay. The last thing I wanna share with you, um, is that the U S Department of Agriculture has extended school, school meal waivers. Through the end of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year, allowing the continuum of universal free school meals. Um, for, for our students uh, through the summer and through next school year. So we are really excited about that. Um, all of our students will be able to receive um, free meals next school year. As they have been doing this school year.
That's wonderful.
Yes. And that's what I have for you this evening.
Anyone have questions, comments? Nope, all right, thank you. Uh, school committee notes, Caroline.
I, I just want to um, express my appreciation to the parents and other community members. Who have put in place multiple initiatives to recognize, support and celebrate our senior. The members of our senior class. Um, you know, it's been such a challenging time for those students. And um, I think the really thoughtful and fun initiatives that have been put in place by um. Many parents and also other community members have just been a, a real plus during this rather difficult time. And I'm sure that their efforts are much appreciated. So I, I did wanna kind of recognize those folks and everyone who has contributed to those uh, efforts.
All right, got it?
Yes.
Nancy?
Okay, um, I just wanna say it's been my pleasure to be the chair of the school committee for the last, um, two years. Um, I am honored to have worked with these wonderful women on the committee. I can't say that the last two years have been easy, but I did try to do my best, and I, uh, wish good luck to Michelle. I know that, uh, she will do a good job, and I'm here to help you in any way that I can, Michelle. And I just wanna thank the community for the opportunity to have me be the chair for the last two years. I also wanna thank our administrative professionals, um, whose day was on April twenty-first, so. Um, central office in all the schools, everybody that's an administrative professional, thank you, and then national teacher, um. We did the proclamation, but Teacher Week is always fun, and, uh, you, you guys this year, wow. You know, just over and above, so, um, thank you very much for all you do every day. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jackie?
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome back all the middle school and high school students this week, I hope they're having a good week, and thank all the teachers and administrators for. Making this possible. Also wanted to congratulate our new select board members, Jamie Stevens and Jennifer Stacy, we're looking forward to working with you. And, um, thank you, uh, Michelle, I wish you the best of luck, and Jen, best of luck in your new roles.
Thank you, and congratulations to you, Jackie, welcome back. Alright, Jen?
Uh, just wanna say thank you to Nancy for, for two years of, um. Roller coaster, boy, you had more thrown at you than I think anybody could've imagined, and handled it with tremendous grace, so. And, and excellent leadership, so thank you for your leadership during this really challenging time, and. Um, a- and to Jackie, um, for, for serving as a great, uh, vice chair, and congratulations to Michelle. Um, so a couple of, just a handful of notes, I know we had, um, it's, it's been nice to see. Um, some of the performing arts have an opportunity to, um, to have performances, so I know there was the drama show. Uh, virtually done earlier this month, um, so job well done there, and I'm really excited to see the music performances scheduled. I think, um, those will be, it's a great opportunity to feel like. We're kinda doing real school again, uh, both in and out of school. Um, congratulations to the teams who finished up their, their, you know, kind of strange and short, um. Fall to wedge season, so, uh, that was a success, and, um, and I know. The spring sports are kicking off this week, so good luck to all of those teams, um, as you begin your little bit of a late start to the spring season. And hopefully we can get through with, um, minimal quarantines, knock on wood. Um, and then finally, a plug, uh, town meeting is the seventeenth, Monday, uh, May seventeenth at Stonehill. So please, uh, attend, unless you are, uh, as a parent of a senior in the concert band. In which case, please go to the concert, see your child perform, but everybody else, no excuses, if you can. Uh, please consider attending the town meeting at Stonehill, it'll be seven o'clock at the Ames Sports Complex. The town does a great job with, uh, the search staff there, um, helping out with feeding and making sure that they create. A safe environment as possible, getting everybody checked in, socially distant, hand sanitizer and all that good stuff. That's it.
Um, can I just add one thing, I'm sorry?
Sure.
I know I'm speaking out of turn, um, but Jen just reminded me when she said it, it, it feels like we're doing school again. Our middle school and high school students are back full-time this week, and it has been a wonderful, wonderful opening, and the energy is amazing. Our administrative team has reported that our students are just, they're, they're just so happy to be together. And the energy is, is, is fantastic, so I just wanted to just remind everybody about that as well, that this has been, this has been a, a. Tiring week for, for all of our educators, but an exciting week as well.
Excellent, thank you. Alright, so. I make a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session. For the purposes of collective bargaining, um, litigation, uh. And for the transportation contract, in, in my opinion, having this discussion in open session. Would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee, do I have a second?
O'Neil's second.
Thank you, alright, roll call?
O'Neil, yes.
Durant's, yes?
Delucia, yes.
Daria.
Thank you, alright, and thank you for making my first, uh, meeting. Go Smithwood.
Great job, Michelle.
You did great.
Yeah, you did.
Alright, meet you in the executive.
Thank you all, good night.
Good night.